Here we are. Okay, I'm gonna follow the meeting to order of the Board of Trustees for the Spokane Public Library for Tuesday, July 18. 3:00 PM here at the hive. I will start with our, first of all, we have signups for visitors and somebody would like to have public comment, they'll sign up, so. Follow me. That's. And then I'll start with our land acknowledgement. All of the Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the international, on the traditional home lands of four bands. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chililobin. It's time of memorial Spokane Tribe of the Means. Srouds identifying themselves as flesh and hair. Care respects to our elders, past, present, and a birth. With gratitude, the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering care for generations. And we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe with all those who share this land. Okay. We have a proposed agenda which we adopted once there's any changes. Right, hearing none, we'll consider the agenda adopted. Our first action item is to approve the major special meeting minutes for.
So moved.
Seconded. Right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right. Assets. And next we have approval of the June 2023 board minutes.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Right. Assets, and now we will have a need for, or a motion to approve the June 2023 bills of contributions.
Move that we approve the. June bills of contributions. Is the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars twenty-seven cents.
That can move. Right, it's been moved, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Now we have the financial report.
I'm just going to give you guys a heads up. A little heads up. Penny is out today. Something came up, so I will be giving. So for the library operations for June 23, our cash and investments trend. So by the end of June, the library is able to pay 181 days' operating cost for the cash investment. That current balance is 7,446,875. This does include our reserve for capital amount of 1.2 million and is net of our encircuses about 1,100,000. And for our expenditure trend for operations, June expenses were 1,171,011 dollars. 966,000, that or 82% was for personnel, this does include free three paid periods. We did purchase books and materials in the amount of 52,021 dollars. purity guard services told 41,231. The majority of that, of course, is central, that's. Our utility services were 23,564. And we spent 17,290 on computers and equipment upgrades. For business office news, the budget process is still under, is well underway at the city and the library staff have diligently worked with the business office for 2024 budget development. We've been doing that for the last three or four months. That's now getting finalized, should be ready to bring forward to the board for adoption at our upcoming August. And then finally, I would like to publicly congratulate Minnie Quam, our business office accountant. She recently received a title change from staff accountant to senior accountant. We are seeing an influx of our workload and are in the process of shuffling and modifying responsibilities within our department. Additionally, as a side note, she will be traveling to Hong Kong during the month of August to visit family, so I just want. Wish her luck and safe travels, since it's been a while since she's seen us since the pandemic. Very excited for her. I would like to open up any questions regarding operations before I respond to that.
All right.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Looking at the trends, do you expect it to be so significantly higher in looking at the expenditures for the rest of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so for the bond update. As far as the obligations executed under an increased threshold authority, we don't have any updates for that this month. For the South Hill branch update, the control board for the cooling unit has arrived and installation is currently taking place. The temporary occupancy permit will not, will not need to be extended, which was set to expire on August 1st. That, however, we did receive that from Hill today, it's been extended through August 15th, just to ensure that. It gives time for that. And as far as the kiosk update, kiosks have been received and the electrical rough-in is underway for the installation. Both at Yokes and at Cafeteria. Units three and four are in storage and will remain there until their respective sites are ready to prepare it for install. And for bond fund and the 2024 budgeting. So there will no longer be a budget adoption for the bonds since there are, since we're in our final year, so it's year five of. There will be, however, some encircuses that we carry forward into 2024. When the operations budget is adopted by the board, which we plan for next month. Yeah, there will be an action item that contains verbiage that includes the adoption of, carry forward for the encircuses that will remain at year end. For both the operations and bond fund. And once we have the actual, I think, very forward amounts, I will. That's it, so any questions?
Next on the agenda is chairman's report, that's me and my mom, she's the library executive.
All right, thank you. First wanted to start, start out with a thanks to Charis for being in last month. We appreciate you stepping up and. Your organization through the meetings, thank you. I have submitted a written report as well, a couple of highlights. Charis also. But we were featured as part of Association of Washington City's annual conference, we actually did two tours for them. One on all the partnership sites throughout the city was a bus tour. And the other was through the Central Library. So it'd be great to be featured and kind of show off what we've been doing for the past couple of years, we basically elected officials throughout the state. Thank you to council members opponent for making that recommendation to the conference for us. In other news, really excited about this one, we've been talking with Carl Maxi Center on how we could partner better in the future. And. With Dana, who heads up our Northwest Collection, they are partnering. Her to offer a program that will tend to preserve Spokane's black history through a scanning game. So there'll be lots of outreach out in the community where folks can bring in. Pictures, documents, what have you, and we'll help digitize them and upload them into our collection as well as provide access. Carl Maxi Centers. Really, really looking forward to that effort. It's also a partnership with the Mac, Eastern Washington Archives and the Spokane. Lots of players in that. Also exciting. Our social services manager, Taya, who's seen present here in the past, some of that. She was awarded the 2022 Mission Partnership Award from Goodman. And that really speaks to the way that she's been able to connect out in the community and bringing resources into the Central Library as well as resources out in the community, I know. A CHAZ is starting to move over at Park as well. In shape, and so really phenomenal job that she's been doing. Connecting folks to resource, resource. We, some of our library staff participated in a training session that was made available by city council on creating a community of belonging. Just a moment of pride when we were called out as a meeting institution in the community and trying to create a place of belonging. And you probably see or have seen that the city's motto is under revision to be a place. Other news, also, this is just such an exciting report. We were able to hire internally for our human resources director, and we have Samantha here, give away Sam. Sam will be taking over for Alan, and as you can see, Alan feels like he doesn't have to show up and work anymore. So they've been working on transitioning, Sam is still currently doing her duties as special events coordinator. So it's a slow transition, but she's doing awesome, she's tackling things and coming up to speed. Very excited for that. Our star spotlight for July, for June went to Peter Anderson. Peter works in our community technology department, and as you can imagine, the amount of tracking for assets around technology that we had to do the past year. Years as we're implementing and bringing in new functionality, it's a monumental task. Peter was awarded that for June. So really a big, huge thing. As Nicole mentioned, two library kiosks will be installed, this will be in early August, Yokes, the other, Gonzaga's, Family Haven. Bids will go out for the Nevada Property Development in the coming month or so. And I thought this was really interesting, get a mid-year count of library visits. It was always aspirational for us to hit a million visits and we never quite did. It'd be like 980,000, I think that's kind of where it topped out. And if we continue on this path for this year, I think we're gonna surpass 1,200,000. So that's pretty cool, that's over 20% increase.
Will there be a celebration?
Will there be cupcakes?
There should be, all of that, should be all of that. So just, it really goes to show, you know, the decisions and the thoughtfulness that this organization took in creating these new spaces, new functionality. It's paid off. They are giving well-used, as we all know. As far as the city of Spokane goes, we are serving as cooling centers during our normal operating hours. So folks throughout the city can come to us regardless, whether it's hot or not, and they do. There are no plans to open up past our normal. And also thanks to council members opponent, we have figured out a way to close down Spokane Falls Boulevard for special events. So the first event will be tacos and tequila at the end of August. And that'll be about the Saturday and Sunday. The city is going to cover the cost for any traffic control that is needed for this event with the promise of next year not needing traffic control because. Bigger's cost complete, you know. So that is really cool, and I'm glad we could work something out. Finally, I presented to city council on July 10, so a general library update, we shared some of the goings-ons at the county. That we're looking at, they really appreciated the work that we're doing in the past couple of years. Any questions?
I do have a question. I would assume with more folks that are coming into the library as cooling center. Their main, the need for additional security and the city is providing.
No. So we don't necessarily see an increase. We could do a week, over week comparison. And if we saw the same thing last year. A lot of folks would choose to stay in there. Want that comfort. You know, wanting to get on a bus, the hot weather. We just don't see that increase in traffic. Our concern is if. If there is a need for cooling center hours after our normal operating hours, the transfer of responsibility. To the city, and that would include all insurance and all sorts of liability things, as well as the staffing space. I don't think it's fair for us to, after an eight-hour shift, also, which can be, you know, quite challenging on some days. But also to do that additional work that isn't necessarily, yes, it is community-related, but there needs to be a different shift. Or staffing, other than just relying on.
But at this time, it's only during our normal op. Have they said at all branches?
Yes. Not at that.
Not here, okay.
It wasn't at South Hill until the AC got.
Thank you.
Yes.
Zach has logged in online, we have the council liaison report, Zach, are you with us?
I am here, hi everyone, good to virtually see you. Andrew took a lot of things that I was gonna say, but that's okay. I am very glad that we were able to get a resolution on Spokane Falls Boulevard and very excited for that event. I can attest and want to thank Paris and the library staff for the AWC conference and showing off the libraries and partnerships. Everyone that attended was raving about it afterwards, so it was a great way to showcase the libraries and partnerships that are going on in Spokane. To people all across the state, so that was super, super cool, so thank you all for doing that. The Belonging Workshop was very interesting, very cool in the library, and we had tons of community partners, and was really glad to see staff there. So officially, our new motto is in Spokane, we all belong, so feel free to spread that. And then, just today, we had a meeting in the library, in the Central Library, about a teen center. And Charis was there to talk about potential partnerships about the city, we're using American Rescue Plan funding to try to create the capital side of it. And we're looking for partnerships and getting more youth voice and creating a kind of standalone teen center space where teens. Go that's safe and productive and fills that void of after-school time where causes a lot of problems. And so we had a lot of people there for that first, first initial conversation, and then we're gonna try to get more youth involved to see what they want it to be. And then pursue some funding for that, so really appreciated that conversation. And then budget update, as you kind of heard, we're still working through the projections, but as we've mentioned before, city is looking at a deficit next year. And so how, we'll be grappling with that, we're still figuring out, but it's important to keep that on your radar. And that's it for me.
Questions for Zach?
I have one, Zach, what's the latest on filling the District 2 spot?
Yeah, so yesterday we appointed council member, or now council president Lori Kinnear, so that vacated her District 2 position. Applications for that opened today, and it has a, I think they closed Friday, August 4th, is the application period. Then we'll have interviews for that person at our next study session after, we're taking like a little August recess. And so that'll be, August 24th will be interviews with that person, starting on Monday, August 28th. So if you know people are interested, please apply or reach out for more information. This individual would only serve from August 28th until November 28th because of the current election cycle. Once that election is certified, the person in the second district who wins the election would take that, starting on August or November 28th. And that's the same with council president too, so council president Kinnear will only serve until November 28th. Which is a short period of time for someone to do it. But we are definitely looking for great people to help us out, so. But so, and that, we're probably gonna be focusing on the budget and having it approved before Thanksgiving this year. Because of that timeline, we don't really want two new council members to come on in December and have to vote on the budget. So we're trying to aim for having that done before Thanksgiving, which is an expedited timeline than normal. Also, our budget director in the council office is gonna be going on leave right around Thanksgiving for other reasons too, so multiple reasons why we're trying to aim for that target.
Any questions? Thank you, Zach.
I think so.
Okay, and now we have the communication report.
Hi. So a couple of things to highlight, you may have heard about the new social media platform, Redz, it's a meta competitor to Twitter. So when we heard that was launching, we did a strategic analysis of the platform, and we don't really see any risks of joining it. However, we cannot currently back up threads on our social archives, so we are required by law to archive our social media for public records requests reasons. And they're not currently offering it because it launched so quickly, and so they're kind of catching up on that. And also, our social media management platform is called Agorapools, it also is not equipped to pre-schedule those. So we're kind of just waiting, we have claimed the name, our Spokane Public Library name, so that somebody else can't go in and claim it and start threading, I'm not sure, on our behalf. So we've got it, we've got it held, and so just wanted to keep you updated on that, that we're keeping tabs on it, we can't quite launch it yet. But if we are able to begin backing those up on our social, we will likely adopt that, because we don't really see a lot of risk in it, we might as well just be in that space as well. We also have our paid social media ads and Google Ads now running, and those, I'll, I'll report on some stats when we have a couple more months under our belt. But so far, those are great, having those kind of strategic ads placed. And then we've got a lot of great press coverage this past month that I'll go over as well for summer reading and more. On social media this month was remarkable social media reach, we had one of our top posts this year, or it was our top post here, libraries are for everyone, it was a pride post. And it had a reach of 15,000, and I thought, wow, that's gonna be one of our top posts for the year. And then when I went to do this report, I found that we had already had another post that had exceeded that with 24,000 reached for our book club bags. So something about that post really resonated with people, Tony and our support services had cleaned up all our book bags, made a nice display on this, at the Central Library, and that took off. We was mentioned in the Inlander, it just really got a lot of reach. So it was a fun, a fun month to see our social media there, because again, I thought, I thought that pride post was gonna be our top one for the whole year, and now, now book club bags is the one to be. On Instagram, our top posts were all pride-related posts about book lists, quotes, and our participation in the pride parade. And you'll notice on Instagram, the number that I reported here is 4,972, we actually surpassed that, we're now over 5,000 followers on Instagram, so that was exciting. On Twitter, you'll, another thing about Twitter, so the Twitter landscape is changing, now you have to pay additional for some of the reporting. So you'll notice the report here looks different than it has for previous months because their leadership is changing things. But we still had an increase, we had 36 tweets, profile visits over 1,000, almost 1,000% increase in profile visits on Twitter. And a lot of it was based on this summer reading tweet from KHQ. And then on TikTok, again, I had some trouble accessing some of the data there, so I don't actually have data on TikTok. The analytics platform was not loading for us at the time of this report. But our, one of our top TikTok posts this month was on the Benny and June exhibit, that if you haven't seen it, it's Central Library, it's the 30th anniversary of Benny and June. Got some really cool artifacts from the filming of that movie here in Spokane on display at Central Library. And then skipping ahead to the earned media, we had some really, we had a beautiful photo essay, if you haven't seen it yet, it's on Spokesman Review, and it's about our window gallery project. I'm sure Rema Lisa will tell more about later in this presentation or in this meeting, but kids, they made some beautiful artwork on the windows. And spokesmen came out and took some pictures of them doing that, and it's just really beautiful, so take a look at that. And both Rema Lisa and Mason appeared live on KHQ. HQ or Crim? KHQ, to talk about summer reading, they did four different appearances, all before the rest of us were probably awake. So they did a great job talking about all of the really cool summer reading programs that we have, and that always leads to more attendance, which, which Rema Lisa talked about as well. That concludes my report, any questions?
I just had a comment, I just saw today, the, it was on Instagram, there is a video about the special collection that is just excellent. And I think it's gonna cause a lot of excitement, I think there are a lot of people that don't know the treasures that we have there.
Thank you, yeah, we're finding the engagement is so, and we can tell our story so well on video, so on TikTok and using those same stories on our reels on Instagram is a great way to show what we have available.
It was excellent.
Thank you. The day of the life of the book.
All right, any more questions for Amanda? Thank you, Amanda. All right, and now we have programming board, which Vanessa.
So you can see in June, we had 254 programs with an attendance of 3,846. That big list, any questions you have there, just to highlight a couple of the. The highest attended thing we had this June. One was the Touch a Truck event at Amute Trail with 250 attendees, the service is bad, it's every, we were infrastructure event, right? There's a garlic truck, a water pump truck, Waterwise van, and others. And there's another one coming up in August that we're in, in Sapsville. Those trucks. Another highlight, you can see pictures there from the SFCC Graphic Design Rad Show at Central, 221 people showed up for that. And that's something where the graduates show their portfolios and then ad agency folks come down to visit students, they kind of give them a leg up in getting a job or an internship. That's the first time that they've held that at the library. And as you can see in that picture, they spent a whole year planning to decorate the social stair, they did like a 3D theme, so all of their everything was red, black, red and blue. And they had that 3D glasses that they handed out, so that was a great event. That's it, any questions?
It's a great idea for sure.
Yeah, I think we do something with dried flowers, getting to the staircase, that's pretty cool. Yeah, it's an unintended effort to.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Amanda, second. All right, now moving on to new business, we have the property tax levy lifted.
Yeah, thank you so much. So for some background on this one, Spokane Public Library currently collects a levy lift with the amount of seven cents for $1,000 of assessed value. That amount for the 2023, I think, expected tax revenue from that is about 2.357 million. That does account for 20% of our resources overall. So this, this levy lift was approved, was approved by voters, the city is okay in 2017, and it had over 71% of voter. Because, you know, we're. Levy lift was established for 2018 and will expire in 2024. So now that the library is fully operational. So uh now that the library is fully operational, we're wrapping up our bond projects. I worked on Nevada, of course. Uh. We're settling into a new business structure. Training programming for more hours, things like that. The library constantly strives to responsibly fulfill its commitment to the community, but that comes with a requirement to adjust and react to to our environment. Uh. So be below is a little snapshot of it's a high-level outlook of the next four years. Which does involve a strategic spend down of our undesignated fund balance with the aim of allowing post-bond operations to normalize. Uh. Just as a quick note, the twenty twenty-four uh budget, as an amount, this does not reflect the budget that we're currently working on for twenty-four. These are just the numbers that we presented in our in our. Those those separate. You don't have anything uh any surprises that will look different next. Um. So in summary, we recommend the continuation and the renewal of our levy lift rate of the seven cents for one thousand dollars of. Of assessed values for a period of just three years. We feel that this is the most responsible ask of the voters because it allows the library to gain some stability in the new environment. Utilize some of our fund balance and it gives us time to reassess the library's long-term financial need and and what other resources there there might be. Be before we move on to the action item, I do want to disclose to you guys. Um. I I did meet this morning with the city council uh budget manager. And city is currently gearing up um as as Mr. As Simba touched on earlier. They're looking at quite a large deficit for for next year. Obviously, the city is gearing up to increase the letting rate that they that they will be collecting. A a lot of that need runs across many departments, which I won't specify. I just it's it's broad general knowledge for you. Uh. So we're still in talks with them as far as what strategy is going to look like. Uh. So really, um the the action of of approving this recall tonight doesn't necessarily mean that we act on it. It's just, it just, it 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 endorses our ability to work with that. Also, um Andrew and I will be presenting uh at the city council study session this Thursday. Discuss that that more. In the council chamber. I want that study session on my calendar. He said he didn't at all.
Yeah, a lot can change in two days.
I have a. So when you said that the twenty twenty-four numbers don't reflect the budget that we're actually gonna look at for the next month, is it either then um. And assumptions that and projections that were done, kind of in mapping out.
Early early off this this year, because those are just generally based off our twenty-three sessions, whereas now we're the, what our twenty-three actuals are and kind of projecting on. And that it's 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 every.
I know, I just uh just to. Echo what Paul was saying, this this allows us to continue that conversation. I wouldn't feel comfortable engaging the council at all without um support. You did mention that we're having this conversation.
Then then when is this?
So the decision does not have to be final, but leave until December twenty to get on the thing. We want to get out early, um express our need and have the conversations that we have because we've done our work. We are a proven entity in the community and really responsible in our funds. This is a continuation. There's gonna be a lot of noise.
Any other questions?
All right, sounds like there's no more questions. So are we uh ready to entertain a motion to approve this Spokane Library? Library pursue about public vote a renewal of the seven cents per thousand dollar levy goodling for a period of three years to begin in twenty twenty-five? So. All right, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Name posted. Um. And then the next new business is addition personnel. It's also.
Thank you. Sorry, you guys have to listen to me so much. You've done a great job. Okay, that's the background on this one. So in August of twenty twenty-two, this Spokane Public Library Board of Trustees adopted the twenty twenty-three budget. Whereas a placeholder was established for future staffing needs to be defined and adopted during the twenty twenty-three year. So Laura and Mary are probably. Familiar with that placeholder we had. Um. It's, it was about two hundred and thousand dollars, give or take, um and just over three, three FTE. So we just wanted to not get ahead of our skis and adopt those upfront because we had a more reasonable and understandable. Position as to which department need to what, whether need to might have for you. So now that our our branches are fully operational, we are in a situation where that staffing need is deployed. Uh. So one of them, that's gonna be a community technology coordinator. That's one FTE for our community technology uh department. That is support desk, support and uh additional capacity for that department overall. Allows us to increase our audience of the community, have a more comprehensive technical assistance. With better innovative programming, digital literacy, literacy and bridging the digital divide in our community. Additionally, we're looking at a library assistant for one FTE as well as a library clerical assistant. That will be two part-time FTEs. Uh. The public services experience and it's experiencing an increase in demand with our expansion and growth. See, as as Andrew can touch base, the trajectory to just pass one million visitors by the end of this year. These positions not only helps support our customers, our customers, there's patrons, but it's also going to be helpful for current staff. Uh, they'll they'll help more more flexibility for training. Different mobility. The, those two, or sorry, those three are are planned for both Central and it's our highest traffic traffic. So uh local locations right now are our largest branches. So in addition to the above staffing needs, libraries have identified two more areas where expanding our students for the help of help them. Provide both safe and effective service to the community. One of them is another custodian. We we do want one more FTE for for our facilities department. Uh. There's been a change in in behavior, spike in visitors, of course, the the use of our space slightly different. Thought we we did adopt custodian last year. And even. Um. That that dollar amount is within the threshold. Uh. And and capacity that we adopted as a placeholder in twenty twenty-two for the current year budget. So that's covered under there. It's already budgeted for. And additionally, additionally beyond that, we have some security people that. So a safety and security manager, one FTE for that. So we're we're aiming to be a safe and welcoming space for everyone. And this current environment, post pandemic economy, see the the things shift in in behaviors that we all know. In response to concerns around overall safety, this position would present the library with opportunity to create comprehensive safety policies. And procedures that directly adhere to our mission and culture. So instead of working with. Mostly just outside or outsourced people, we could really have them, have have somebody with with our core values to carefully promote us. And additionally, three, three security guard FTE that would work under that person. Don't intend on hiring those immediately, but throughout the end of the year, based on on that person's recommendation, what library staff feels. Eventually, and play them across different branches or maybe just. Whatever that sent me. Yeah, exactly.
Uh. We'll leave that flexible to determine the needs and we can recruit. Uh. I imagine that working someone in a hybrid contract as well as library FTE environment as we're transitioning. Yeah, we'll we'll rely on the manager's expertise and how this.
Um. I, so I I'm, when I was reading this preparation meeting, I was wondering, I wanted to hear more about the change of behavior. Just, you know, I might be able to guess, but I thought.
Yeah, and so we've seen, you know, more instances of of. Violent outbursts, um disrespectful behavior towards facility as well as staff. Uh vandalism, definitely, especially bathrooms. And, you know, really, you know, we feel like we need more control. Over the environment and and over how it's managed. You don't get that with the contracted service. So the first step is to put this manager in that can really set the vision, work with social services manager uh to really come up. Uh. How to manage the environment. There's gonna be things that we figure out that we didn't know. Um. A- as we're going through this. As we're talking to our library systems, Karis had attended the security conference in April. And this is their biggest recommendation is if you want a security team that aligns with your mission, what you're trying to do in the community. This is the way to go.
Way different than walking around outside of a bank building.
Yeah. Uh. We, we, you know, we we want to help the folks that are coming from our network. We want to support them. Also, we want to provide them with a safe.
From financial standpoint, we'll essentially just reduce the cost of our contract. Service level to personal.
There's a call for that one. Gris six. We flex it according to where we see incidents, where council. But definitely really far and central branch. Need a lot of attention. Hive does too, but it's more self-guiding.
The goal would be to eventually have all security in-house and no longer.
More than likely. It could be that we contract for a special event, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
To to sort of flex out.
For sure. Like your base would be at all branches, in-house staff.
Excellent cities that we do already. We're in a locker in our space. Just to give you a sense of. The level of. It used to be that we couldn't operate central with one security. Now we.
We've been shadow when I was there the other day, like a group of kids, young adults came in and then there was another group out of nowhere already in the library and just coming to a head. The library staff was amazing. Like, I don't know how I would have handled it and they were just sort of like, we're just gonna keep going like. From that door to that door, but I was like, that's not part of your job. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have uh adapted these to uh to something that we didn't, nobody saw coming.
Yeah.
Definitely.
All right, any other questions for Andrew?
You had said something about with the library assistants. Um. That they would be divided between uh Central and Shadow. Do you mean they would be divided in time?
Sorry, sorry, no, I apologize to clarify. So the uh library assistant and one of the clerical assistants would be in Central and then another, the other clerical assistant would be in Shadow.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
And and the goal is that is really to attempt to cut back on some of the desk time that our staff. Uh. Especially.
Do you anticipate needing additional funds for the custodian? I know last time we were hiring for the custodian, it took a while to find. I don't know if that is. Salary. I don't know if it's location.
It 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 is salary. Yeah, for this one, we're looking at around forty-three to forty-five thousand. Okay, so we we do already have those those funds available.
And we're finding the the sort of markets.
Okay. In that.
Of the employees' perspective.
Yeah.
Uh. So I anticipate.
That forty-five uh is inclusive.
There's no good questions. The ones, positions, let's talk about the current capacity from nine twenty-three, or sorry, ninety-three point five five. All right, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Great, done. Motion passes. And now we have the presentation from our.
Of course, no pressure, right? Maybe I should stand. I am a shorty. Uh. Hello, I'm Remalisa Colton. I'm the youth arts specialist. Uh, for that it's. Still feel like a baby. It's great. Oh. I kind of want to start off. This is a question I sometimes ask kids in my program. Who here is an artist? Let's see some hands. And so the thing I want to bring up and I've noticed, six-year-olds eagerly hands up. They're like, I am, I'm an artist. They're so eager. The hesitation I see definitely happens in a lot of H K. And I kind of want to change that here in Spokane. I I know it's a huge task, uh but. That's kind of my goal. My big belief is that everyone, now maybe artist is not the term that you're most comfortable with, creative maker. Who here thinks they're a creative maker? See, a few more hands, but still some hesitancy. That's okay. And uh. So you. Have a fun time. Next slide, please. I have a challenge for you. Uh. We're going to put the board on the spot. Now, uh you can either choose a partner with your fellow board members. The audience and pick a face.
You don't need to draw me.
All right, before you start, here are the rules with this challenge. So make sure you you pick your partner. You got it? All right, you can't look at your paper when you're drawing. Can't look at it. You have to make eye contact with the person you're drawing, so it's gonna get a little. I'll give you a countdown. While you're drawing, I'm also gonna talk a little bit about why I love this exercise. So three, two, one.
Oh, is it a bit?
Tell tale. She won. She liked the paper. She knows she needs her paper. The Bible, they have no control of.
Yeah. Where it is either.
I don't think I gave you. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two. Down, take a deep breath. You could be upside down or right side. Good.
That's a good one.
Are we, these are staying here in the hive, right? They're publicly decided, it's your best. That's okay, I, your eyes are. What are some things you notice from doing that exercise?
I didn't know where to go, I didn't know where to. Very challenging, like.
Yeah. It's fun. So one of the reasons I love this exercise, it disarms, especially for the ten-year-old plus crowd who no longer view themselves as a creative. So they draw, they see what everyone else has done and go, wow. We're all a little imperfect here, and that's the entire point of this exercise. That's a really great chance to just kind of practice a hand-eye coordination since you're no longer moving your hand and doing its own thing. You can even practice mindfulness, but you know, that's a little harder with the younger crowd, that's okay. Uh but it's mainly just to disarm them and go, oh, this is okay, this is acceptable, and I pull up pictures like abstraction. I'll look across though, and they go. So a little bit about myself, my name is Ronald Lisa, pronouns they/them, already told you I've been here a year and three months. A little flex from my end, some of my experience, I got my BFA, Focus on Sculpture Digital, um and my BA in art history from BW at the same time because I was insane. I'm a work, I've been a working artist since twenty sixteen, I have several public artworks throughout Spokane, I have two signal boxes, a mural out on Main, I was part of the Black Lives Matter mural. Uh I also have a mural at uh Hope House, at My Shelter, as well as Spokane Housing Authority. So I, I get around. Um I was the structured program manager at Spark Central until this job posted last year and I went, art? Yes. Oh, but I have over ten years of experience working in nonprofits, including uh events and activity planning. I like to stay active in the arts community, uh I am on the Spokane Arts Board, I'm a commissioner. I also sit at the uh Art Salvage Board as their secretary. So, oh, enough about me, let's talk about the programs I've done. I started programming, so I had a really long runway, I was hired in April, but I got to do a lot of backseat observing of my coworkers and the youth service team. I didn't start programming until September. Uh so here are some of the ones that I have done. Uh costume figure drawing, where I would ask a lovely staff member to volunteer and be my costume uh model. Some of you have been the models. Uh I've also done mixed media with plants in collaboration with Jinjin, with Plants from the Garden. Did an art activism program, pixel portraits, paper tryouts. Painting T-shirts, which actually the T-shirts were donated by Global Neighborhood Thrift Store, which was fantastic. I'm always looking for ways to partner with those in the community, um warning lasers, we have a glow forge, did y'all know that? You're in this building, so we use a laser to cut wood and the kids love it because they get to play with the laser safely. We've done some cosplay crafting with wands, staffs, masks, as well as paper pop-ups. I mean, you're going to be like, wow, this is a, this is a lot, and when I was writing it down, yeah. Uh I like to keep a nice variety of things, uh you made art, now what? What do you do with your art now? Uh watercolor cards, classic, uh we did build your own miniature art gallery. Micro art challenge, make your art as tiny as possible. Uh messing with charcoals, they learned some techniques with charcoal, tiny hands, tiny paintings, I started doing a tiny hands program for little kids under the age of like six, just because I saw that there was a huge ask from the community. Whenever I did my art programs, families would come and go, oh, there's something. So I'm trying to pepper those in, I try to listen to as much feedback from the public as I can when it comes to my programs. I listen to what worked well, what didn't work, um more wearable art because new art of this art, you might as well dress up like one too, so we made felt patches. Uh we've done little puppet shows, painting with nature was really fun. And then this one I kidnapped from my time, painting with a twist, it's one of those paints and places. But I modeled it for kids instead with How to Paint Spokane in Four Seasons. Those are all the fantastic pieces they've all done, and you, it's hard to tell in the photo, they're all slightly different, and I think that is what's wonderful because they are mixing the colors themselves. Usually you just get that color as it is, but I was like, nope, we have five colors, how do you make the color brown? And you only have red, green, yellow, blue, black. How do you make the color brown? It's a tricky color. It is a tricky color.
Add them all together and then just adjusting.
You can have all of them adjusted.
Well, you can make it really nice gray.
But I cha, I like to challenge kids in programs, slide please, and then the last leg of my twenty two, twenty three. With an art hour miniature library, it's really fun. Uh fiber art stitched lines, so I always like to challenge the idea of art making. Art making, sometimes people think it's just drawing and paintings, it can also be embroidery. It could also just be clay, it could be a whole number of things to kind of help challenge. Uh young folks, maybe they haven't really experienced art making that way. I did crayon like a perro, because even professional artists crayons. Uh sculpture with basic shapes helps train the eye to figure out, okay, how do I do a human? Well, heads are usually round. And kind of break down different things around them in just basic shapes. Building a house, square try. Summer programs, so my first rodeo was summer programs, with my own program, so the Window Gallery project, I was really proud of that one. Uh we finished it up at the tail end of June, but it helped picked off summer reading in a big way. Uh we had quite a number of attendance, and we did it at three different branches, at Liberty Park, Shadow and Pullier. Uh we used chalk markers, so they're very easy with water to remove, facilities probably thankful for that. Uh nothing permanent. Uh and I'll stay up until the month of August where we will come in and cut them off if you haven't seen them yet. Check them out, a lot of the windows you'll be able to see from the outside as well, like for Shadow, if you go to the community garden, you'll be able to see them in the fence room. Up next for me, I'm collaborating with Colin and Gina with the Video Game Coding Camp. I'm excited to share my uh information on digital art making with kids who want to take their video game graphics and customize it. And then lastly, but for another summer program that I'm leading, it's Fashion Day at the Library with more shirts donated by Global Neighborhood Thrift. But also we'll be bringing out the button maker, they'll be making their own pendants, jewelry and accessories, and then they get to walk the runway. Very excited for summer. Would you like a teaser for fall? Looking forward to fall, so here's a teaser, some of them are old programs I have done, I have heard really great uh feedback from folks who participated, so I'm bringing back mixed media with dried plants. Magical wands was a huge hit where they get to use air-dried clay um over chopsticks or skewers and then make their own wand. Little bit of magic. Um bringing back digital uh warning lasers with digital wood crafting and the glow forge, paper tryouts, but some new ones that I'm trying out. A game, colored detectives, how do you mix these colors to get this mystery color? We'll see, test out, we'll, I always get weirded out with new programs. Uh so we'll see how that one goes, and then we'll also be making our own DIY sketchbooks. I know, and our own DIY walnut cake, because during painting with nature, I had warmed up the kids to the idea of made our own walnut cake.
You need walnut.
I, I do need walnuts, I have one source that I was planning to go uh spury through, but if I have a safe route.
And I mean, we're ready to take off the smarts.
If you don't mind, I would love to come over and pick walnuts.
We just don't have to wait for them to drop.
Exactly. Feel, end of August, early September, that's usually where they.
There are these standing man.
We do that in eighteen. Beautiful color, so messy. All right, and the last slide is just one big thank you for me, and if you have any questions or remarks you'd like to share with me. Or ask.
Oh, actually, so uh it was on, I should have stood at the end of one of the lists, it was the um the program that was done uh with the art. It's art, architect, art.
Architecture.
Yes, so I like.
Yeah, of course, so I was reached out to by, so Andrew Park is a dad who comes to our storytime and was like, hey, I'm an architect with the Architect Institute of America chapter here in Spokane. And they usually come into schools to do programs to encourage kids to view architect as a potential career choice. Uh since the pandemic, they've had a hard time going back to the schools, so they reached out to us, and I was more than happy to collaborate with them. Because architecture can speak huge volumes with creativity, space, food and feeling, like the federal courthouse, how do you feel going in there? Versus here, where you know, every building has very different feels, and what a great opportunity to do that with the architectures. It was interesting work, some of them did not know how to talk to kids. Exactly what I was there for, I was like, oh no, I got you, all right. Oh. The kids, come on.
All right, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, uh any additional agenda items, changes please make? All right, has anybody signed up for public comment?
Nothing on mine.
All right, our next regular meeting is going to be uh on Tuesday, August fifteenth, at the Green Park Library. Uh we will not have an executive session now, and so with that, I will call us adjourned.